Awesome. Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order at uh. Five fifty-four. I'm sorry, five fifty-one according to to this. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at five fifty-one. Um, our first order of business is a budget workshop. Um, Ross, I don't know how, you know, uh, how you want to go through this. I was gonna start with the capital improvement plan, go through it kinda. Uh, line by line and then go through the workbook, uh, the budget worksheets.
Um, you're you're the boss. What what we used to do is do the capital on a separate meeting.
Okay.
But that's up to you. I, cause it's a lot. I I mean, for the first run-through, I know that I'm interested in the increases and nothing else.
Okay, then if we, uh, if you want, we could start with the, uh, the proposed budget and then work our way. To the, uh, capital improvement plan. That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then we'll see where it goes. If we have enough time, we might have enough time. Um, and if we have to fight about it, then yay. Okay, um, so actually, I just looked right on the, uh, screen. Um, okay, I'm gonna try, uh, my best to not mention, uh, salaries, uh. As a, as a percentage or anything. Um, it will be something we could talk about at our executive session.
Totally agree.
Basically, basically going through this, um, there is, there, there are, there is going to be a set increase for everybody. Uh, across the board, the first line you'll see is only a point seven-two. That's because, um, I did not, I will not take an increase this year. Um, and that was built into that. Well, let you guys get to that, but I, I just figured this is my first year. Uh, I'm still learning. Um, there was a big increase last year, uh, for this position. So I left that off of it because I want to see how. Uh, all this plays out and we could talk about that as a separate topic if you guys like.
Did Kim and I get a raise?
You do.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
So, you know, I mean, honestly, we, there were a lot of things, I, and I will say, um, due to the school windfall, budget, budget windfall. Um, that's how we were able to put stuff, but I had already had it out, so I kinda left it out. Um, but, you know, you guys can vote me out if you want to. Um, and then obviously the, uh, grant procurement, uh, zero selectmen's office. Um, just standard increases. This one is a lower, um, because anybody that was hired, uh, new will not get any increase this year. Um, it's going to be prorated to their original date of hire to one year out. So that affects, uh, Sarah, uh, from the selectman's office and, uh, Jen at the senior center. Uh, Jen was hired in November and now, uh, Sarah is hired in March. So that's a one-year. Um, so that's a, uh, prorated down. Uh, next line.
Well, well, on the first line, on the first line. I think, um, I think you should be in for the raise, but that's my opinion. But now that you say that's people who just got hired can't get a raise, yeah, I see your point.
You know what I mean? You know, I want to keep things fair across the board. And, okay, so I, I, I can say that. If you want to, we could put it in for a year out. If you want to be fair and consistent. I don't feel like coming into office, uh, and this is a good discussion. Uh, I don't feel like coming into office and giving a raise is appropriate.
I, I. I agree, yeah.
You know, I don't like the, the way that looks or the way that feels. Um, so that's why I was like that.
I mean, you know, granted, I just came in too, so I, I, I think that's true for me too. We should, and I think it should be. The same for everybody who just came in.
Or not, right, or not. And if our, if our policy is they don't. Then I'm not in favor of changing the policy or treating people different.
I agree. That's how I feel, yeah.
Okay, so Ross, you'll get your increase immediately. Um, uh, Kim and myself will go one year out, one year from start.
I think that's fair.
Right, prorated till November of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. All right, uh, because it's true, and you know, I, I, I felt awkward with it, so I'm glad we had this discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay, so that's why the lower increase to the selectman's office. Um, finance director is in there, um, and that's a little bit higher because that also. Is paying for clear.gov, our new budgeting system. Um, that programming for that will be coming out of her line.
Okay.
Running that. Uh, treasurer is, uh, employment, uh, town clerk is employment. Tax collector is, uh, normal raise, um, and then we have some extra shifts included in there as well. Um, assessor, um, this is for the clerk to go to a higher wage. Um, and again, that's gonna be a wage conversation. Um, and then there's also, uh, uh, for every class. It goes towards her degree, there's an increase, um, that's built into that. Uh, most of the other ones kinda stay the same for a little while. Board of Assessment, Appeals, Board of Finance, um, no real increases. Um, till we get down to Building Department. Um, and that's a, uh, again, a payroll increase. Um, that's basically where it go, goes to, and we can talk about that one specifically. I do have people listed, but I'd rather keep that offline.
Yeah.
Um. Probate court, you know, stayed flat, uh, postage delivery, uh, that's just increases in freight and shipping. Um, Town Hall, um, we can get into that detail, but that's a, uh, employment as well. Um, elections basically stayed flat, auditor, legal fees. Um, the next big change is animal control, and you'll see that there's a, it went down nineteen point three-five. And what that is, is that's a, an overcharge from, uh, twenty-one.
Oh, really?
Our proportion was put out of whack, so by looking at that, that, uh, we, we paid too much.
Okay.
So that's coming in as an overcharge, so that went down. And then reporting basically just stays the same. Um, down to, uh, land use is a compensation. Uh, planning, zoning, zoning the extra fifty, the fifty-six point nine-eight. Um, it's not a lot of money, but is, uh, an extra thousand dollars for added advertising that they're gonna be doing. Like their added, uh, publications. There's been a little bit buffer for that because that price has increased significantly. Um, in when wetlands went down, their ask, uh, went down to twenty-one, uh, to sixteen hundred.
What's the fifty-six percent increase that there's a block on it? I can't see it.
I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's. For the added fees for their publications, for their public notices and all?
Zoning.
Zoning, oh, yeah, zoning.
It's not like it's a lot of money. I just was wondering.
It's a big percentage, and that's why I'm looking at the percentages going down. I know that's why I said it's like, it's only a thousand dollars, but, um, that, that doesn't go very far. Um, and then we're going down to, you know, every, you know. Volunteer recognition's gonna stay at two, historic district buildings, everything stays the same. Um, and then we're down to, uh, Senior Center, um, with their added programs, uh, that she wants to do and all. Uh, we do have a. New person in there. Um, there's also, you're gonna see some, uh, upgrades, uh, to the Senior Center building itself.
Uh, that's in there, Pat? That's in that?
All in there, yeah.
Okay. My only. That's a huge increase and, you know, okay, you have a new person who wants to do good things and we wanna, we wanna support that. My, my only complaint is I'd like to know. Um, if these programs are being attended and things like that, which I've never been able to get information on. You know, who's going there? How many people are using this resource?
So that's one thing that we started with this, um, this Senior Center program that she has, that we've, are, that she's already started. Every time you come in, you enter yourself in. You say what service you're gonna be using, and then when you leave, you just kinda check out. So part of her, uh, uh, research and, and. In justification for her programs is to put stats behind that. To show how many people, what kind of programs people are coming to and enjoy. Um, they just had a cupcake decorating class. Um, today, that massage therapist was there this morning. Uh, there's a lot of other things that they're doing, which is great. Uh, but I agree, I want to have it justified and I'll actually.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, I'm not opposed to it at all. I, I just.
Yeah, I, I agree, but it's, I think it's great that she's, um, implementing that, uh, statistical analysis component, so.
But when the taxpayer asks, I want to have the answer, so.
Absolutely.
Well, attended, that this is good, this is, this is a good thing, you know. Lot of our population's becoming senior, blah, 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 so.
Right.
She did justify a lot of her plans. We actually had, um, and just as an example, we had, we had gone through her budget and probably. Clipped, uh, at least ten thousand dollars off her budget, uh, because she was putting in for, for things as a buffer. Um, and there wasn't room in the budget for a buffer and she, she had, uh, said, well, what if, you know, uh, uh, the stove dies or the refrigerator dies or something? How are we gonna afford that? And, you know, that was more of just a teaching that that, there is a, a line for that. It's in the capital expense, so. What do you specifically need for programs? What do you plan on doing? We were able to break down and get a little deeper into that number, which was nice, and I, I think we all feel pretty confident with the number that came through, so. Believe it or not, that actually came down from our first discussions. Uh, but again, I want to make sure that it's added value, you know, whatever we're gonna spend money on, it's gotta add value to the community.
Right, I'm with you.
Okay, and then, uh, library, they did already present their budget to the Board of Finance. You know, it's really not a big increase at all.
No, very fair, yeah.
Um, Lake Illinois went up. I'm sorry, Russ. Uh, because they have a larger ask?
Well, we should tell them, bring down your ask. Twenty-six percent? Who does that?
I know that they're, I don't know if it's buying a new boat or whatever.
If I can, if I can interject, it's, uh, capital, they're putting, they, they need to put some money away for new boats. So they're asking all of the towns to contribute to that, and that's what the increase is.
Well, we need more information. Maybe you have it, Pat. You know, how many boats? Remember, we're only a half share. We're not a full share because we have so little shoreline. There's like three houses in Roxbury on the lake. I, I don't mind contributing. I know this pays for police and public safety, but I'm wondering if. You know, sometimes these groups get out of control and they start spending money like crazy and they. They use public safety as their excuse. You know, how many cops do you really need out there? Um. I think that's a big in- increase and they need to do better. I, I can't accept that, me personally.
Okay.
Yeah.
They did, they, they did submit a budget with their request, so I can email that.
Thanks, Kim. I'm sure it's in the book that I didn't get yet. I'll get it.
No, it's not. It's actually.
Okay.
I will email it to you.
Yeah, actually, I would like it as well. That would be great.
Yeah, I'd like to just know, maybe have a meeting with the whoever's in charge to ask some questions of. Uh, are you, are you expanding? What are you basing that on? You know, are there more boats? Are there more accidents? Or we just having a good time on the lake?
And it's true. I think we do. I think if, i- if we even have three houses, I think we have two houses.
Two houses and, and we.
The minor bridge side and the other.
Right, and we agreed to a fifty percent of that. So the other towns are paying a lot more. Um, but, but we, we, you know, we have problems getting people on the Lake Illinois authority. Cause nobody here has a boat there. So nobody cares. Uh, I don't know if that position's filled even. Cause we have, we always had trouble getting somebody on that. Um, I think we have one member or two.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
That's a good question. And I'll be honest, I, I didn't, uh, deep dive into that line and I probably should, could have.
No, no, that's why I'm here, Pat. Give you the history. We, I, I bitch about this every year. This is no different. I just want some, uh, they, it keeps going up. I mean, I'd love to, I might just do a graph or ask them to give me a graph of their budget and over the years and it. Seems to keep going up and up and up. Um, and who's it helping? And who's? In Roxbury is, is getting benefits from that. That's my only question.
I can pretty much assure you with their boats, they're not coming up to Roxbury anywhere near it, cause there's too much. Like, you wouldn't be able to get a boat even up into, there's too much under.
No, not, not unless they like, like rocks, but it's a, uh, it's a, it's a regulation, it's a statute.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you can't just say, hey, we're out.
You're right.
We're, we're stuck in either, we have to go to our legislators and, and have us get out.
Yeah, well, it's tough at some point about that boat launch area, but that's a different conversation.
Yeah, it's good for canoes.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough, right? It's be able to put in there, but I, it just, I can't get in there.
It needs work. If we really want to be serious.
Yep.
We need to fix it right and so people can launch a motorboat there. You could, if you're careful going in.
Right.
Um, I hate to late, look at it from selfish interest, cause I use that and I love it. And I would love to fix it up. Of course, I wouldn't want to deal with like traffic or anything else there, cause right now, nobody uses it, but you're right, when you get to that. Um, you just get off that, that rise coming down the ramp and it drops down.
Well, no, nobody uses it because it's in bad, it's not in a good, cause. And we should look for a grant or something or start saving money for it.
I agree.
But, but it's a, it's a beaut, I, I don't have a boat, but it's a beautiful. Um, it could be a really beautiful park and resource if we start concentrating on it.
I agree, I agree, yep. Okay, and then, uh, recreation, uh, went down significantly. I went to, uh, the recommission meeting. Um, and, and basically asked them why they needed, you know, a thirty thousand dollar ass, so, um, they're not spending it. Um, so I, I, I feel like twenty thousand, you know, if they can justify more, that's, that's something else, but for now, we're. Pulling them a little bit farther back. I don't think we should hold a place guard, uh, when we're running the town as tightly as we are.
Great, a great idea, Pat. Always felt that way. Did you bring a bat?
I, you know, I, I was good. I'm, I, the, can't, the, you know, that, all that campaigning, Russ, I, I got it. I, I got it. I, I just.
Looks like you brought a bat and my cousin Benny with you.
He's got a shield.
So, but if, if they can run programs and we can justify it, but even their programs can make revenue, so. I think it was a good balance anyway. For, for now, they felt comfortable with it. Um, and then we'll see, they, they don't need a lot of equipment. Um, there's a couple of things that they wanted, that they have the budget in there for this year to do, so by just planning for it. Okay, any questions on that page that I need to go back to?
Not at all.
No.
Okay. Okay, next, uh, Highway Public Works, Public Works Salary. Um, this is done a little bit differently. Because this is Teamsters. Um, and we have yet to negotiate this, although we do have a place card increase, um, which we felt was good for now.
What's that increase?
Can I talk about it? Without going into executive session?
But, let's go in an executive session. I think when you talk about people as a group. You can't talk about it in a meeting, but when you talk about a person individually and you're gonna discuss their. You know, how good they're doing or what, what their worth is, you have to do that in executive session.
Well, perfect then, that I have no problem, uh, giving those percentages, um. And because, because remember, this Zoom is gonna be publicized, so that's why I want to make sure that I'm okay with it.
Right, yeah. I mean, as long as the whole group gets the same amount. You're not talking about one any, one individual.
Exactly. So, and we would need to go, cause I do have some people for that. Um, but for right now, our proposal is five percent for town employees across the board as an increase.
Now, we're, we're saying five percent? We're not waiting for them to say anything?
No, for our town employees, for our union Teamster, our place card is for three. Because we have yet to go into negotiations.
I, I think that creates a huge problem. Um, in the past, we always used what the. Union was given in holidays and vacation, that, you know, well, they get this, so the town. Employees should get this, but now we're doing the other way around. I, I think three and a half is what we should give. I. I don't understand five percent. I know I've been following it. Um, most towns aren't going that high. Um, I don't know the reason, but we could talk about that in executive session.
No problem.
But, but I find when you treat the union different than your town employees, you're creating a problem.
Well, there's, there is nothing, Russ. For the record, we have not even talked with anything of, with the Teamsters yet. There is, there is no negotiated price. My, uh, reason for the, uh, five came up from. You know, hearing what the other, you know, chief elected officers in the area are. Um, I will say Bridgewater is at a six percent raise this cycle for their town, and Washington is at five percent.
Yeah, that's a tough one, because you gotta know, you know, what are they paying people? Are they not paying as much? You know, there's so many variables. Um, and I could understand you coming up with five percent on that, but I, I think three and a half is, is the fair, fair number. And people talk about inflation, but these are merit increases. These are based on what you. How you performed, um, and cost of living and cost of living hasn't.
I'm only li- looking at this. This is not anything, there, there are a couple merit things that we could talk about. And that's gonna be an executive session. Um, but it is a cost of living increase. When we look at our Consumer Price Index over the last twelve months. You know, we're looking at, you know, a, a lot more than that, you know, six percent. So, that's just, I, that, that literally is, and, 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 and I'm comparing it with like. Because gas costs more, oil costs more, your electric costs more, everything that, that our town employees have encountered in inflation. You're paying more for a gallon of milk, they're paying more for groceries. I just don't want to lose good talent and keeping them up to par, so. That is literally just, I'm looking at that as a, as a, as a cost of living increase.
Yeah, good, good discussion for the, uh, executive session.
You got it, perfect. Um. Okay, then the next line, lied down is, uh, you know, the roads, paving, uh, chip ceiling. I had a little bit more money in there, but, um, for a couple of reasons, um, just because of the way. Everything has gone up in, in cost. Um, and, and right now, oil is, is crazy and all asphalt products are crazy and. I, I may even hold back on getting some of this work done this year, uh, and get it done next spring, but I'd like to leave it in the budget. Because I think we can get more bang for our buck once, if, if petroleum products can go down in price. Um, it's, we're paying double in some cases.
If.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, we do have, uh, the town road winter maintenance, uh, budget is flat, uh, dirt roads, um, up slightly. Um, that's the unimproved town roads and, uh. Basically flat.
Now, do, do we have or is it in the capital budget to like fix Grassy Hill Road, put drainage there?
We're almost there. We're almost there.
All right, I didn't know if it was in this. Also, I heard rumors, and I don't listen to rumors, that. Um, when I saw a twenty-two percent increase in town road, uh, public work salary. I heard a rumor, we're hiring more people to do landscaping.
So, I was gonna get into that on the capital plan. That public work salary overtime twenty-two point six-six increase. Adds in another employee.
Okay, and that would be because y- your vision is to get rid of subcontractors doing landscaping. And do it ourselves.
Correct.
And what do you do with that employee in the winter?
I'm hoping we can get somebody that's talented in multiple areas, because I'd like to take on more of the. Rebuilding and maintenance ourselves.
Of, of the equipment, you mean?
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just telling you my thoughts. Um, I'm not. For or against, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a listener. I think it's a mistake not to sub out worker, you could sub out. And I, I know a lot of towns are going in that direction. And the reason is, is employees cost a lot of money. Uh, then, then you got the union, then you got all these other things, where you hire a sub, they deal with all that and, and. In the, in the long run, it's cheaper to sub out as much as you can, especially in a small town. In order to back that up, if that's what you want to do, I would like to see what we pay for landscaping now. And what, what, how this saves us money. I'm sure you thought that through, but.
Of course.
Just for future conversation, not now.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I just would like to see, um, you know, that comparison, so I could understand. If this is a good thing and we're gonna save money, or, or this is just gonna, gonna be something we hit ourselves in the head over. Cause once you hire them, you can't get rid of them. That's a.
And I agree, and it, there is a, a, a little default cleared clause here, because we do have, um, summertime help. That's budgeted already in this budget. So we could hire summertime help to take care of that summer and then hold back, so I can, I could take out that extra employee and hold off for another year.
I would, I, I would like you and Kim to go through a year the way it is. A- and, and then we could really look at it together, whether this is the right thing to be doing, rather than. Jumping right into it before you even had a summer to manage it, cause you haven't managed it yet, Pat, you know what I mean? So, I, I just think it's a, it's a great idea to look into. I think we're running too fast with it, though.
Well, obviously, there's a lot of things that we want to get going, and I completely agree. I completely agree with you, Russ, so. Let's, uh, for this draft, um, I'll lose that extra employee.
All right, just for now.
And we utilize what we have. I agree.
I'd like more time to think about that.
Okay, got it, got it. Um, so down, um. Uh. I think the best, the big thing you want to see is, uh, surveys engineers.
Well, the town garage in Salt Barn, is that repairs to the building? Forty-two percent increase?
That's actually gonna be in, uh, more of your capital expense, cause that's another fifty thousand dollar line that's not even in here. Um, this is nine thousand eight hundred and six, so this is normal expenses. It's a high percentage number, but it's not a huge dollar number.
Okay. Yeah, surveyors, engineers, I imagine you, you foresee having to use engineers more and more.
Well, yeah, that's, uh, actually this Wednesday, uh, at nine o'clock, uh, Doug DeVesta and I are gonna be meeting at Grassy Hill. Uh, we're gonna look at East Flag or, uh, uh, East Woods and East Flag.
Yeah, I agree with that number, because we, we need, we need to fix some of these roads, cause we're wasting money putting Band-Aids on them.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of drainage issues and you can see it now, like I've done, and, and it's all getting that water off the road. Um, and so how we can control that, and, you know, I mean, I would love to see, you know, not a, not a this year thing. Uh, but to get a steamroller, you know, that you could actually roll the dirt roads.
Oh, God, we talked about that, thought about it, and I agree, we should have bought it. It's a waste to grade a road, put calcium on it and not to steamroll it. It's a waste.
Yep.
And it, and it shows, and I don't know what the opposition's for. It usually. That, well, Jim Conway didn't feel we needed it, uh, but it was really the Board of Finance, and I, I, I never looked into who's opposed to it and why. But I, I think it's something we should put in for now, if it's not in the capital.
It is not in the capital plan.
It should be put in. We're, it's not the way to do, not the right way to do things. It really isn't.
Do we know the price on those, or that's something you just?
I'd have to go shopping. That hasn't been on my radar.
You know, you're talking a couple hundred grand, but. All we do is we grade, we put calcium on it, and the next big storm we get wipes the road out.
It away.
Yep. Yep, okay. Um, so that's where that, uh, extra fifty-five thousand came in from. Uh, next line down, um, for tree maintenance, uh, I cut that budget, uh, took it down, you know, basically a third. Um, that's because of the cooperation that we've been having from EverSource. They've been taking a lot of trees and we've been doing a lot of less on our own. Um, so that's just through our own management of EverSource. I think we can do better. Um, so that's just a lower line. So we're at twenty-five thousand, so fifty percent down from the original last year's budget.
Um, and did we use that money? No.
No, we haven't used it all yet, from this year.
No, looks like we used what, seventy thousand? Isn't that what it says?
Uh, twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, estimated at fifty, though. Or we budgeted seventy-five thousand, so now we're bringing it down.
We've used about forty, we've, we've used about forty grand this year of the seventy-five.
Okay.
All right, where do I? Where do I see that? Oh, okay, okay.
We're estimating at fifty by the end of the year.
Oh, I.
Right, okay. So why, why would we go to twenty-five? I, I'm saying trees are a big problem, and I see a lot of trees that need to come down. Um.
Is that because of the grant? That's, is there a?
There is gonna be a low-sip grant on that, but just from our own, it was just a budget that I thought. Should be cut or that we could do more. You know, again, what can our town do? Our town workers do? Relying more on them and less on outside sources, so if we take away the trees that Louis and Stanley and everyone else is gonna be doing. And we did more tree work as a town crew, that would justify their being there. Um, if we had somebody that had some arborist experience. Um, so with that, if I'm gonna take out that employee and hold off for a year. I'll just put that back up to fifty for now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, 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 I for one don't want town workers doing tree. Yeah, I, 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 I for one don't want town workers doing tree work where it's complicated. I know they're good, but for insurance reasons. I know Southbury went and hired their own tree crew. I think I'm going to call, um, Jeff and ask him whether that's working out or do they, because they seem to be cutting a lot of. I don't know whether that was really needed or if they're finding that it was needed or not, but they invested heavily in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, to set up a crew, I'm sure that was
Yeah, they invested heavily and I can't believe again, what's the, what's the evaluation? How much do we save by not subbing it out?
Mm-hmm.
Good point. Good point.
You know, can I just add one?
That up to 50, I really would with trees are getting, you know, we, we have those ash that are dying all over the place.
Right. I, the only thing I wanted to say is that Patrick is getting so many of these trees taken down by ever source. Really haven't, that, that 50,000 I put in there is just an estimate of what we could possibly have spent by the end of June. But, um, but I, it, it could be lower than that. We have not spent a lot of money out of that budget this year.
All right, I'm okay with 25 and if we run into a situation, we, we have a meeting, we go to the board of finance that we have this situation.
I think you bring up a good point, Ross, and I, I'm okay with leaving the 50.
All right, okay.
You know, whatever, whatever you guys want to do, I'm just
Play it out another year.
Trying to explain the thought process.
Yeah. Well, I think it makes sense if the other employee is not going to come on and you're, because you were thinking that that would be someone that would do that. So I was wondering where the, um, the trickle down was going to be with
It was hitting on several different lines because I was hoping to have more well-rounded and get ahead of some of these projects was the thought.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay. And then, uh, town parks basically, uh, remains flat. Uh, we're on to, uh, protection. So there's a 33% increase on that. So we have our normal, uh, uh, payroll increase. And then the other part is just some added shifts.
Are we focusing on speeding? Is that why we're adding shifts?
I think it's overall safety of the town. Yeah.
More police presence? Is that?
We're going to be, yes, we're going to go from nine to 12 shifts a week.
Okay, just want to understand it.
Yep, more patrols.
Not a bad thing, as long as it doesn't get crazy and we start buying 15 cars for three cops.
Oh no.
No. You wouldn't let me do that, Russ.
I would, I wouldn't let him do it either.
But I have not got away from the idea of putting a dummy in a vehicle.
We were going to do that. We never did it. I don't know why.
Why not? Well, I guess, uh, there's a, a potential of vandalism.
A what?
A vandalism. Well, if the thing's sitting there for too long, then people are just going to know, but you know, yeah.
One day here and there.
Right.
Um, stupid things, Pat. Um, the, the speed sign, I find speed signs very effective even for me personally. Makes me slow down. The speed sign in the center of town isn't working. I'm sure you know that in front of the church.
That's because the state came by and said it wasn't approved.
Oh, so you're waiting to get it approved? Okay. The other speed sign, which was my favorite on South Street down by where I live, you know, where Falls Road or River Road comes in.
It says slow down all the time.
Right. Could we go back to thank you when you're doing the speed limit? Cause I've gotten a lot of friends saying, what a great town. Yeah. Thank you.
I like the thank you as well. The thank you, great idea. Yeah.
But, but I
It was a programming issue. I haven't been able to solve that problem, but I will. I would, um, yeah, but I, I agree with those speed signs and I, I'd like to actually buy a couple more. Um, because I think we have some other spots where it would probably help, um, you know.
You know, on Squire, they're upset on Squire, probably be a good road to slow them down on Squire.
And, uh, Botsford, um, I could, I could put that in next week's, uh, uh, next board of select meeting.
All right.
All right, that's good.
Signs. Okay. Um, state police has stayed the same. The next big line is the, uh, and we've kind of talked about this a little bit is Trinity. This is going to be a one-year, uh, commitment. Uh, as we see, that's their increased ambulance, Trinity ambulance.
Yeah, then we're, then we're going to figure something out there, Pat?
Yes, this will be our last year because, uh, and I, I think I can safely say that because New Milford has already said, um, that they're investing in their own crew. They're going to be fully paid. Um, and that breaks up the, you know, the, the group of us that were in Trinity of the seven towns. They're, you know, basically the big dog that made it all worth it. Uh, so with them being out, we have to come up with another plan. We're probably going to be joining up with another, uh, department, but this also bought us a year to try and negotiate how, what that's going to look like.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um, fire department ass just went up, you know, slightly 3%, um, fire marshal, again, that same kind of, uh, uh, increase. Insurance bonds, that's a 40% increase in cybersecurity. Is represented in that 27.95 increase.
Yeah. Yeah, it's incredible.
It is a problem.
Yeah, that is. Uh, silver preparedness, COVID-19 went down. Um, we're, it's still there. There's still, you know, things going on with that. We just pulled it down a little bit. Um, and then the E911 system is the code red, our email blast, all that kind of stuff, and that stayed flat.
All right.
Any questions on protection?
No.
All right. Uh, health and welfare, um, visiting nurse vital stays the same. Um, municipal agent, we have a, uh, in this, this 4,033, we actually have an extra $5,000 ask from Greenwoods Counseling. Um, due to some of their needs with COVID and mental illness and addiction.
Okay.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
The next line is elderly disa, uh, disabled services. This increase is representative of an extra driver. Uh, to try and take more people around. So in addition to Bob, uh, and Alan, we'd have Mary Ann, uh, DeSilva as well.
All right. So that's being used, that $65,000 van that the state gave us basically.
Yeah.
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 It is, huh?
Yeah.
All right, cause I get people saying to me, it's always sitting in the parking lot. I guess you're not around when it's being used.
There's actually a need, well, we, we, there's been a couple more people in a wheelchair, uh, in town, uh, that are elderly and that, that need is something, um, I actually talked to Jerrilyn about it and maybe next year, instead of just the Odyssey van, we might have a handicapped accessible van. So then we're not having to take the bus for each one, which would probably, and I don't want to, didn't want to, you know, complicate this budget too much. Um, but I think that's a good next year situation. You know, if we do that, if we're going to get another vehicle, what is it going to look like? Um, because if you take somebody to dialysis, for instance, they're gone for four hours and they kind of monopolize the day. So to have a smaller vehicle or something else, uh, but we have had more of a need for wheelchair accessibility. Um, so we have two drivers for that, Bob and Alan, uh, and then Mary Ann only drives the Honda Odyssey van.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that's that 16% is that extra driver. Um, a slight increase in, uh, Newtown Health District. Um, and a bigger increase in transfer station for gas and hauling.
Um, that's going to get worse.
Built in, it, it seriously is.
Yep.
You wonder if we should shut it down like Bridgewater. But I know that would get a lot of people mad. They pay a lot of taxes. We don't give them a hell of a lot of services. And that's, that's one thing that seems to be important.
Right.
It is.
It is, yeah. And where would we all meet?
Exactly. It's a social thing for me. I go up there when I got one bag.
Okay, um, and then benefits, I'm not sure I can really, I should really, uh, do too much with the details of the line because that's all representative of the increases that have been added with manpower and, uh, just raises in general.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, under miscellaneous, um, the only thing is, uh, the computer upgrades, uh, came out of this line. Uh, we moved it to a capital expense line. So that'll be on the capital expense side of it. Um, so you'll see that there and that's kind of nice because it's just a revolving account. You know, if you add into it, we can use it and get things as we need it. Um, and then always put away because that's just more of a revolving cost.
Right.
Um, and then, uh, the same contingency fee, C P Memorial Day and miscellaneous. So overall, um, well, I guess, uh, we can kind of go through this, but, um, as it stands now, we'll have the adjustments for, um, what we talked about, but as we rolled it out, our operating budget is up 12%. Capital improvement and we'll understand where that's coming from. That huge increase is, is all going to be represented by one number, and that's the minor bridge culvert buydown. Um, so overall, our, our budget increase is 19.63, but with the school lowering it, uh, 10.98, we're basically flat at a 0.55 increase.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Do we need the land acquisition fund? It seems, I know it's not a lot of money, but we'll keep putting money into something that what are we going to buy someday? I don't know. I know during executive session, we have a discussion about something in the center of town. I guess it's not a lot of money, but um, I was the only one, I was always the one who fought like hell for it. And now I'm seeing it's a lot of money in it and I don't see any potential unless we help the land trust with some things, but that gets complicated because, you know.
Yeah, because then as a taxpayer buy-in, you know, what are we?
Well, we can't do it. I talked to Gail about it, but you know, they have to buy in that they can't put anything on it. It might be good with certain properties, but not others.
Right. And, you know, and then there's this whole affordable housing conversation and because of what it can be used for. And so I think the, um, for now, maybe leave it and then we can go into more depths with that conversation.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, you know, like everything.
I agree.
What's the plan? I think that's what your point is.
Yeah, as always, we should
What's the plan? There is no plan. So we, why are we putting the money still in? So.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, oh, look, you got the graphs up, Jimmy. Thank you.
The only other thing, Pat, is we got to be careful with the education. That we did good this year because that changes so much from year to year. Two years ago, Barbara freaking out, three years ago. And, and I'm the one on the front line of who's moving in in town because they have to get a wetland permit first. And I'm happy to report there are four new families moving into town and two of the women were pregnant when I met them off for a wetlands walk. So families are moving in. Um, they are families with connections to Roxbury. You know, parents giving their kids land, but, but we are going to see Roxbury is going to see an increase and the New Yorkers, I shouldn't say New Yorkers, the weekenders who are moving in. Uh, I know that lot six just sold on the woods.
It did.
And, and it's a family who said that they're gonna, they're from New York, but they're going to live here and educate their kids here. That's a new thing that, uh, people from out of town are finding that our educational system thanks to the teachers and Megan, Megan Bennett, um, is better than the private schools. So I think you're going to see an increase. So this is a great year for us to celebrate. But let's not spend all the, all the inheritance at once because because, uh, two years from now, we may be the, the ones on the end of that bad stick.
I, I honestly, I have no doubt, um, that it will, it will come back in a, in another way. Um, but as of right now, um, I think we, you know, keeping the budget flat based on where we are, um, and see what we can do.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, that's the total side of it. So, um, shall we go to capital expenses or do you want to go to either revenue side or where do you want to go? There's not much other, other than continued increase in revenues.
Yeah, I'd like to do capital. Um, if it's okay with Kim, would you like to do capital? Cause revenue is revenue. I could read that and understand.
Absolutely.
Um, I need to put a light on, hold on.
We don't have a lot of effect on that revenue side. So it's
We're going to go an executive session after this?
After this.
Yeah, good. Yep.
So Pat, is the red, the changes or?
No, anything that was red is getting closed out.
Okay.
So when we go through, uh, right from the top, so the, the, the first, uh, 15,000 we're spending. So, uh, obviously the budget's on, uh, the left-hand side from, uh, 21, 22. Uh, and the changes to 22, 23 are going to be the next, uh, green side over. Well, I could just leave it up there. I'm going to go on this anyway. Do you want to shrink that down, Jimmy, or?
Yeah, it's a hard one.
Yeah, it's tough.
It's tough. It's, it's just huge. So, okay. So where, where we are on this, um, the first line, the first 15,000, uh, is our market evaluations for our reassessor, uh, reassessment of the properties. Um, not much else here other than, uh, the software updates for $20,000. Um, new hardware, software plan, assessor creator, market space, equipment for senior center. The library already presented to board of finance, um, the 19.5 for replacing windows. So I guess you would have saw that, um, the, the first red line was for planning P O C D, planning conservation developed. So that's where that's going to be closed out.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing was, the other was, uh, last year they had asked for the money to put the, uh, coloring book for the historic district commission. Um, and that is now closed off because that was response, that was, uh, replenished by a grant.
Okay, great.
Um, so the public works, um, is, you know, pretty decent. It's, uh, we, you know, the greater, we have, uh, pushed the date out from 26 to 27. Um, and it's because it's, it's in good shape. We just, uh, bought new tires, uh, for it for this year. Um, and I, and I'm seeing another $25,000 investment. This is Jimmy, this is where it would be nice to see the other side. The end of it, if you can reduce it more and get the whole page. There you go. Look at that. All right. It's harder to read this way, but, um, you could see this year we have no money going into this. Uh, greater, but then the following years we have, uh, 10, 10 and five.
Yeah.
So I just pushed out the little, uh, the date a little bit more. It's in decent shape. Um, the next vehicle down is the, uh, 2012. That's number five. That's the one that's, uh, going to be replaced, has to be replaced. Um, and that's the money already in there. There was, uh, money transferred because we didn't have nearly enough money to put into it. We had 55,000. Um, and the truck alone is, is, uh, you know, going to be more like 80,000. Um, by the time you put the sander in the plow end, you're pretty much around 105. Uh, there's no additional money that needs to be, uh, you know, put away for that. Um, next line down is the, uh, 2007 International. That's still great. There's nothing that really needs to be done, but we'll start putting away for future replacement. Number eight, this is the 2001 Mac. This is the one that I'd like to, uh, do as a rebuild. Um, with, uh, Truck Builders of Connecticut. Um, this would be a complete sent out, knock down, rebuild. Um, the next one I'd like to, uh, do is the next truck down, the, uh, 88, the 1988 Mac, um, that would be the following year. Um, there's two loaders. This is the loader that's down at the, uh, Public Works Building and also the, the loader that's up at the transfer station. Um, there's 195.
Need to invest in that because it goes, it goes, it crushes cardboard. You know what I mean?
It's pretty rusty and falling apart and the cab, um, is breaking away. Um, you know, I, I, I did get some, the prices from H O Penn and it was just kind of excessive. Um, with working with Foreman and Paul and Corey down at the, at the Public Works Garage. We're going to try and redo this ourselves because a lot of the parts that we were going to, you know, we, we can buy replacement parts that are just bolt on. So a lot of the rusty stuff, because it's a lot of surface rust because they were, that unit was down, um, at the, uh, at the, at the salt barn first. So that's where all the rust came from. Um, and it, it's, a lot of this is just rust damage, you know, and it's a lot of surface rust damage. I, I'd like to do that ourselves, um, and we're going to be looking more like a 50,000, $60,000 renovation, you know, half the cost. Um, but it's going to start with, uh, T2, uh, inspection, um, where they're going to go through what I already reached out to H O Penn to make sure that they have that. Uh, and I'd like to get that scheduled. So we know that the engine and the hydraulics and everything else is going to be worth it if we rebuild it. But most of it's just cosmetic. Both units have, uh, a little over 5,000 hours. So it's not even like they're used a lot. Um, so the first Um, so the first.
That was my.
Yep. So this first one, um, we're probably gonna rebuild ourselves. It couldn't have been, uh, because of its year, it's two thousand and one. Um, it wasn't gonna qualify for a certified factory buil- rebuild anyway. Um, the other, the other loader, you know, we can look at it, uh, next year, but I'd like to leave that money in. But again, we're not moving anything into it, into these funds. The money's there.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to know.
Um, the, the backhoe, um, I'm still putting in for, we're looking at a replacement in twenty-six, so that's just a continuing investment. Um, the next line is the two thousand six Chevy pickup. That's bushes. That's already been replaced. Um, that's just gonna get closed out, the eight sixty-seven left in that account. Um, the next one is the, uh, water truck, the, you know, the water truck or a wench truck or, uh. You know, arm truck or whatever you want to call it. Um, putting sixty thousand into that, so we'd have a hundred and thirty thousand, which would be a little bit more of what it is. You know, again, looking at, uh, you know, used vehicles and rebuilt, we're paying. You know, vehicles, you know, whether used or new, you're paying top dollar for anything. So I don't know that this is, uh, something that we should do immediately, um, but I'd like to keep the money in there, you know, if, if the, if the economy changes. Or the market changes in the next year, it'd be nice to have that money there.
What about a tank in back of the truck?
Well, that's exactly what it is. So whether it's a hook arm or a wench truck. We're looking at a truck that can serve multiple purposes.
We bought one.
What?
I thought the last new truck we bought was able to do either or. I remember I'm talking about taking, you could put a tank on it.
No.
No.
That's not the one they bought.
I think it was discussed a lot, Russ.
Yes.
Lot to do that. It was, you're, you're correct. It was discussed to do that, but we ended up not doing it.
Because you need a water truck. If you're gonna put calcium on roads, you need a truck to.
Absolutely. Yep, you do.
And if you do roads and you don't put calcium on it, it's a dust storm.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So that's, um, I will say that, uh, we can get a little while longer on, uh, the Mac truck that's, or the truck that's down there, the fire truck.
So we have something now to hold us over until we.
It, yeah, it's, it's not a great option, but it's definitely an option and we're not, you know, without. Um, so that's why I'm a little bit more, you know, hesitant about buying, you know, spending the town's money and, and, and buying something just for the sake of buying it. Um, I want to make sure we're gonna get value out of it and right now it's, it's, it's just a tough market, uh, to buy anything.
So you're looking to have the hundred thirty thousand could be ready so that we can get something.
Correct. If we decide to do that, we could do that, but it's gonna be something that's gonna, to Russ's point, serve multiple purposes.
Right.
Have a, a pull-on tank, it'll have a flatbed, you know, and then we can also, if we wanted to get into the trash business, we could do that too.
Yep.
Then, uh, the, uh. Flail mower, you know, again, just, uh, something that we can replace. We already have money. We don't add more to it. Um, with the trade-in, does these tree removal, um, we're gonna bump that back up to fifty thousand now. Based on our conversation just now.
Okay, so, um.
We gotta see if we can get funding for it, but that budget's gonna go up.
Okay, so it'll go up another twenty-five?
That'll be fifty.
Yeah.
And then I do have the twenty-five thousand for public works mowing. Um, I'm gonna suggest that we keep that there, whether we go third party or not, or if we address that. You know, remember this, if we were to do this next spring, we would need if, we would have to have needed the money in already, so I'd like to leave it there.
Let's see, that makes sense.
Um, the, I'm gonna kind of skip, uh, well, the fire department because they're basically on their, uh, same net at the end. Um, ambulance, ten thousand a year, they're putting away for it. Um, there's no other, other than the, uh, new police car and that's replacing the two thousand fourteen that's down there. Uh, again, not enough money, but, uh, we're gonna get closer.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, public works building complex, um, so this is, this is what I. The line that I put in for the garage interior sheet rock lighting.
Yeah.
You know, start looking at that, you know, that's a negotiable figure, um, whether it goes up or down. Um, I think the, the fifty thousand is a minimum at this point, you know, to get the inside sheet rocked and painted.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's important.
The bathroom kitchen upgrades meeting room, you know, there's money in there. We put ten thousand just towards that. Um, I see that as more than enough moving forward with what we have. Um, you know, the, the, the whole kitchen project is, you know, really just gonna be about twenty-five and we had forty for that originally. Um, it's definitely doable, um, and that's all professionally installed. Um, I have not gotten any prices back on the tennis court maintenance. Um, you know, with this budget, we'd have forty thousand. I've called a few guys. They just haven't gotten any ma- price yet. Uh, but at some point that is gonna have to be rebuilt, uh, because the asphalt is breaking down underneath. Uh, they already told me.
Common long-term problem.
It, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. It gets a lot of use. It's people are using that.
Really does. I, I drove back here coming from the house. I fed the cat and I came back and. Somebody out there hitting balls. That was great.
Yep.
Um, the next line, I, I have not, uh, had a discussion with you guys about this yet. Um, I did get a. The, the town hall, I got an estimate on repaving and just half of it was over the forty thousand. Um, in order for the town hall to be repaved, and again, I would say even if we put money in, we hold off another year. Uh, because of just the petroleum prices, but I. But that's gonna be a hundred thousand dollar thing.
Oh, my gosh.
It's gonna be expensive, but that's even, you know.
I was just gonna ask that. It's like.
There's some areas that are broken up. I mean, I know that in a board of finance conversation, we've had this conversation before. And we actually had assigned that money to have it done years ago. Uh, because it was kind of chipping up and some curbing issues and stuff like that. It, could it last another year? I don't see why not. Uh, we could probably do some hole patching here and there because there's a few where it's broken away. Um, but in order to completely do that, we're not even in the ballpark with what.
Can we chip seal it instead of paving it? Get five, ten more.
Okay, so that, I asked, um, I asked, uh, Matt from Seymour Ceiling about that because I had the same wonderful, uh, thought. Uh, and he said, no, there's, he, he said, there's too much damage underneath and if you go to patch it, you're not gonna be able to chip seal over it because it's not gonna be the same.
No.
So we could do some patching this year and then chip seal it next year. That would work.
That's what.
You can, you can chip seal it.
You can. We wouldn't be able to do it the same year that you patch.
Right. You gotta give it time to settle on.
Yep, yep.
I say we're looking to go on that route, keep the money that you got in there.
I agree.
And, but then we have the option.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right. And then we'll look, next year we can look at chip sealing. So just leave it where it is. Okay, uh, minor memorial, uh, library, that's the, uh, roof escrow plus their A C. That's their whole long-term plan. Um, same with, uh, senior center, uh, because they're gonna be looking at the roof as well, plus their windows and some other things that were an issue.
Yeah.
Um, there's already money in for Har- Herbert Park. And then we're down to, uh, the five thousand dollars, which is a consistent number for compacter maintenance containers. We have some money in there. So if we wanted to buy another container. And then we get on to roads and, uh, uh, bridges.
Well, we're going back to public work story. Um, we don't have a roller in there. We should start saving for a roll.
I, I wrote that on my list because that was our first discussion was of that was tonight, Russ.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it's a great idea. Uh, I, I, I could support it a hundred percent. So, um, what would you like to see as a number in there? A hundred grand for now?
Well, I think we need to get a idea on the price, don't we?
Yeah.
I don't know. You said a couple of hundred.
If Kim, Kim could look back two, three years ago, we had a price in there. No? We don't need it now.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know, we, we talked about it.
Talking about it all the time.
No, I know it. But I'm not sure what happened to the, I.
All right, we'll, we'll get a price, right, Pat?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's easy.
I think you have to do that before we decide on what the amount is that we.
Got it.
I don't think we ever budgeted for it, but I know it was discussed in the last couple of years.
Okay, so we're, uh, on to, uh, roads and bridges. Is that good, Russ?
Yeah.
Yep.
Self-explanatory.
Yeah. Davenport's already assigned deal. Botched Hill is probably gonna come in half that.
Yeah, it's great.
Uh, minor bridge is the only one. It's not gonna happen this year, so that gives us two years to offset that cost.
Great.
Um, so we're looking at three hundred and eighty-nine, seven fifty this year, three hundred and eighty-nine, seven fifty next year. Um, still waiting to have some kind of firm, uh, decision on the federal bridge funding program.
For Weller's Bridge.
For Weller's Bridge. Squire Road.
Minor Bridge. Okay, it's not only the culvert, it's the bridge too, because the bridge needs. Uh, the joint flaps repaired. I can't believe.
Correct.
We just did that bridge and.
I, I.
I know it.
Shocks me as well. We just rebuilt that road and we're ripping it up.
Exactly.
Doug, Doug got an airful from me because he was the engineer.
Frustrating.
But I, I have to say, Jim and I went, walked in that culvert.
Yeah, I, I talked to Jim about it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to walk with one of you. I, I don't see where the problem is. It baffles me.
It's, it's not terrible, but it is nineteen.
Professional engineer, you know.
It's nineteen forty-one, Russ. If you can believe it, it's been that good. That's why I.
Yeah.
You know, I, I started to change my opinion on these galvanized, uh, pipes because if this thing's been sitting there for. Eighty year, eighty years.
Yeah.
And it's not that bad. Like, it, it, it shocks me. Not that anything would happen. It's twenty-five feet.
Bad. Why do we gotta replace it? Can't we sleeve it? Uh, we, I've been down this road.
I know you.
Cardinal, yeah.
Can't sleeve it. You could, because you can't get it down there. There's no accessibility. Um, and I know you, you've been talking about this for two years, um, before Kim and I, and I was kind of part of that as well, but. Um, the grant's already been written. It's.
Right, right. They already did their.
Already in motion.
Boring.
Yeah, there's money there, so that's important.
Um, so that's, so that's just be really cost the town, uh, you know, a two-year investment.
Yeah.
Um, Squire Road, I feel that there's more than enough br- money in that to have the town take care of that.
Yeah.
Um, and then more, you know, the bridge assessment money is obviously in there and then the ceiling of roads is in there. So if we look at the budget from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, we were at four eighty-four. Uh, twenty-two to twenty-three, we're at seven seventy-one. Um, if you deduct minor bridge, we've actually lowered it.
Yep, that's great.
Can I, can I just add one comment about all the funding of the roads and the culverts?
Yep.
And that is, um. Uh, in my discussion, when the auditor was in here to do the, uh, audit. Um, he, he and I discussed how to. If it was feasible for the town to fund these road projects. Um, without having to go out to bond or, or to budget a lot. Um, not, I shouldn't say budget a lot, but, but to do it. I guess it's the timing of how all these projects kind of pan out. Um, because we are gonna be getting some significant money a hundred percent on Weller's Bridge. We're gonna get back from the federal government. So, so if we're able to, uh, cat, our cash flow is to, to be what it should be. We can probably do all these projects without having to, um. Add any extra money, but it is gonna take, um, what, what he suggested we do is. Create a sub-fund of the capital projects fund just for road, just for the bridge. The roads and the bridge projects that are coming. I mean, these are just a handful of them. We're probably gonna have more. Um, that way, whatever we take out of the town aid road money, we can put back into this fund and reuse it again.
I think that's a great, because that's, because that's all assigned funds. So you're basically turning those assigned funds. Into unassigned funds, but in the same bucket.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Makes sense.
Correct. You want, you want to be able to use, keep reusing the money that we're getting back in order to, um. To pay for all of this.
Right.
They're doing it in Washington. The town of Washington has, uh, a system set up like that. And it's working out well. They have a lot of bridge projects right now. I talked to the finance director there.
Yes, they do.
So, um, so I will be, um, asking the board of selectmen to, um, at some point. In the not-too-distant future, to create a sub-fund of the capital projects.
Okay. Yep, that makes sense.
Russ, do you have any questions or Kim? Do you have any questions on?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Shall we go into, uh, executive session?
Yes.
Sounds good. Do we have to motion to do it?
Uh, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jimmy, can you take care of this for us?
You just need to, uh, invite Kim, I'm assuming, in. Is Kim going in or is it just the three of you?
Uh, just, there's probably just to be three of us, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put Kim and I in a waiting room. I'll mute me and then just call or text me or walk down the hall. And I'll, uh, I'm gonna stop the recording and we'll pick it up when you're done.
Okay.
All right. Got it.
Thank you.
You don't need to be in a waiting room. We'll just send it, right? Why, why are you gonna hang out?
Yeah.
Because you gotta come out of it and make a motion if you're gonna.
Because he's our host.
And a motion to adjourn and.
And he's the, he's hosting it, so.
Okay, you could. I, I don't mind if Jimmy's just there and on mute.
I'm gonna mute it, so I'm, I'm not gonna listen to anything.
That's, that's.
Just yell or scream and I'll unmute.
Got it. Got it.
Have fun.
Okay. Okay, so we're back from a sexy, uh, executive session. I, I guess I could make a motion to.
Was Russ gonna, Russ, you?
Oh, you, yeah. Are you gonna do it, Russ?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we agreed to have a four percent merit increase for all employees. Uh, obviously, the town crew is a union and that's a negotiation for later. Plus merit increases that we discussed.
I, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's it. So we are going to, I will, uh, get back with everyone with, uh, all the adjustments that we discussed tonight. First of all, thank you both very, very much. That was a great discussion.
Yeah.
Um, and then we will plan another meeting probably for, uh, next week sometime.
Okay.
Um, and we can go through and, uh, uh, put this.
Seven o'clock if you can.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry about that. Yeah, never again.
No, my God, I gotta feed goats. I wanna walk a dog, you know.
The dog hasn't gone out yet, Russ. Oh, no.
My neighbor came down and got him. All my neighbors love him.
That's awesome.
Walk.
Just, uh, when you're, when, if we're gonna sched- schedule that for next week, just take a look at the board of ed. Uh, scheduling, I wrote that down. I don't know if there's a budget meeting on that. If not, then it's no problem, but there is one.
Think there is a budget meeting Monday night?
Yeah, is it Monday? That's what I was.
I thought so.
I don't have my.
Have to go on their website.
Isn't it the first Monday?
That's a regular meeting.
Yeah, but then there's the budget meeting.
Okay, well, um.
I'll just take a look, but we can.
So Wetlands is tomorrow, but next Tuesday. Russ, the twenty-ninth.
Sounds good. Twenty-ninth, seven o'clock.
Okay, I just have to, Hank, can you wait?
Yeah, we can all, we can all get, get back on it.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem at all. We're gonna pencil it in.
Pencil that in and then if you have a problem, Kim will.
Yeah, I just need to check on it.
Of course.
All right.
Of course. If not, can we vote her off? Can we, can we vote against her and change stuff?
Ah, what a.
Okay.
Too bad it wasn't on video. It'd be on ridiculousness. Luckily, nobody taped you. Right?
Awesome. All right, well.
See you all later.
All right, make motion to adjourn. Somebody second it.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye, have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.